Burns Parkway over here, the county overlaid that, or they reclaimed and overlaid it. And that might be something to think about. I don't think a lot of people realize this. That only has a two-inch mat on it. And it's actually held up pretty good. It's certain alligator some now, but.
Sure.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, you know, one thing I would say is there was very little discussion about the 25 percent assessment. There was about two hours of discussion on the, on the roads and the, which order they should be done, and probably just a few minutes on the 25 percent assessment. But that is something that, you know, a, a financial plan has to be, would have to be prepared. After you have an idea of the roads that are going to be scheduled in the next five years, then you have to try to take a stab at, you know, you're going to be assessing the residents, and some of those residents might choose to have it put on their taxes and pay that money back over 10 years. Some of them might write a check. Usually depends on the amount. The larger amounts, the more likely they are to put it on their taxes at a low interest rate. And if it's 1,500 bucks or something, a lower amount, I think most cities see payouts right away. And that's something that's hard to predict. But financial companies like Ellers or Springsteen can help. I think Ellers came in and presented at a, a previous workshop. But they can help prepare estimates like that and, and determine a, kind of a financial plan. Yeah, we didn't know, we really didn't know how much there was, what the, what the right dollar amount per year of expenditure was.
Councilmember Rickert.
Obviously, whatever project we would decide on, you know, before we can even get going, obviously, if we're doing any assessing, then we got to do a feasibility study to make sure that, you know, we are able to assess that, that amount. And, you know, so, but again, it's, like I said before, you know, we've been way behind A-ball for years. You know, you've known that. We've seen it. We have, you know, we haven't really done anything over, I think what's the last road that we've done anything, you know, significant was when, back in the early 90s when they paved 185th and Jasper.
Yeah, Councilmember Reig, our, our last major road project was in 2008, which was Bassell Street.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And.
But that's still eight years ago.
Right, yeah, that's, I mean, it's half of its life almost. And that's, that's a pretty well-built road. But, but, you know, we have a lot of roads. Most of our system was built in the 90s and early 2000s. And so, all those roads and these older developments are going on 20 years old. And, you know, right after they turn 20 years old, there's going to be all the other newer developments, like the Bailey Estates, the Milesone Ponds, the Quiet Meadows, that were built in the early 2000s, and they're not going to be far behind. So, kind of the thinking of-
And then we'll have hover cars, so. We'll have hover cars.
But again, you know, I guess my point is, you're looking at this five-year plan, you're talking 1.7 million dollars, you know, and we're, I forget, I don't have the numbers. What did we finally approve this year to put in the road and bridge?
It was over 200 for next year.
It's 200,000.
You know, and-
But that was counting the money from state aid.
Correct. And prior to that, you know, it's been about 50,000 a year. So, to cover 1.7 million at 5, you know, if even at 100, you know, you're talking 17 years.
But if you could leverage that money by a 50 percent assessment, then-
Well, again, I'm not sure where the 25, yeah.
So, and that 1.7 million does not include Old Viking Boulevard.
Well, I, I, and I understand that.
185th, Watercrest, Hale Street.
Yeah, because you had another, had another half million for Old Viking, roughly.
Right.
But if you did a 50 percent, 50 percent assessment, then 200,000 dollars a year, so if you had 400,000 dollars a year, you could, you could almost do three miles a year.
Well, again, and that, that's kind of comes to the point where, you know, again, I thought that's kind of what we had talked about when we, when we first got together last time, was around 50 percent assessment. But again, once we get to that point, and we pick a project, we have to do the feasibility study and find out, again, if we can even assess that much. And that's the-
And just for clarification, the feasibility study does not determine if you can assess that much. It's just, the feasibility study, I take a, an actual look at the project, estimate quantities, and estimate the cost of the project, and then apply the city's assessment policy.
Yeah.
So, if you're interested also in determining the benefit or the value, that'd be a separate, what's called an appraisal.
Yep, so, obviously, no matter what project we pick, there's going to be considerable amount of dollars have to go into it prior to the project even beginning.
Right. Until you start the process, do the feasibility study, and start to get into the assessment hearings and stuff. Until you do that, and you know who's going to be opposed it, and go through the litigation to actually really oppose it, you don't know how that project's going to go. And that's, that's why typically, we used to do all our meetings in, in one night. And then, you, you, all the cards are on the table. You knew who was going to fight it, and who wasn't. And then, as a city council, you could say, yep, prepare the plans and specs, let's move forward. There's only two people that may fight it, that we may go to court, and, you know, overall, overall project, that's not that big of an expense. We can make that work. So, that's, until you go through the process, really, that's what we need to do. We need to go through the process and do it. And, and you'll figure it out. And I think it, you know, Paul, you could speak for it. I mean, you, we went through some of them hearings with your addition.
I've been assessed those.
And, and back then, for a 50 percent assessment, I think a majority of your neighbors would have jumped all over that.
Yeah.
Some I know want to, but some-
Well, there's always going to be some, there's some that don't want to pay anything.
Yeah.
You know, that's just the way it is. But that's, you have to weigh all that out?
Looking at some of the, they're doing down in Ramsey here, they just were announced some of their, I think they've got three projects going on. And in one of them, the assessments are under 2,000. And the other one, the assessments are more like 9,000, depending on the parcels, how many parcels on the, on the stretch road they're doing. It's a huge discrepancy, depending on where you're at. I mean, 9,000's a bigger chunk to assess.
And it depends upon if there's sewer, water, curb and gutter, sidewalk, all them things. And every city assesses a little differently. But when you get living talent, it could go up in a hurry.
Yeah, my mom's in Crystal was 9,000. How can you be, it didn't improve her house by a lot.
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing, maybe, and I'll maybe touch on why we thought Pinnaker Lake Estates, or why the Road and Bridge Committee arrived at, um, I'll try to get to them here and pass them around. But there was some stress cracking, or more than just a normal longitudinal and transverse cracking, indicating that it's, the, the road is showing its age and needs some more strength. And if, if it, something's not done soon, there's likely going to be some alligator cracking occurring very quickly. So, I'll just pass these around, since I don't have a PowerPoint to show them. But basically, that was the reason we chose, or, or the discussion, that revolved around Pinnaker Lake Estates being one of the first ones on the list, to try to save that road. And again, it's because it's, it isn't a residential neighborhood. And if it goes to a reconstruct, we're going to be at the, the much larger dollar value, again, maybe 10 or 12 or 14,000 dollars.
Does, does that road? That's a road years ago, I remember when they put the second lift on, the tack, then-
Yeah, Joe said something about the-
And, and the, the wear actually slid some.
Because that don't look like it's rutting, so like it's really not going through the whole base. I couldn't tell by the pictures, but it didn't look like it was rutting. So, it doesn't look like the sub-bas is giving away. So, is, is it possible, just that wear courses? No, I mean, it looks like cracking to me that happens when your base yields a little bit from garbage trucking.
We get cracking in our overlays, you know, you'll get the top layer to peel off sometimes. And the metal underneath is, is good. You'll get a little pop hole, that's just through your, your overlay.
Sure.
Layer, which happens when the tack didn't set up like it was supposed to. And I know they did a fog seal on that.
Actually, a seal coat.
Yeah, but like, well, sorry, it was a seal coat. They, they wanted to do a fog seal on John, they didn't do a seal coat.
Okay.
Which doesn't really help the, the sliding of the wear whatsoever.
No, it wouldn't.
Well, we asked for plans, and we did everything with 3 million dollars. Wanted to get something started, and get the process initiated, so we knew what to do. It does make it challenging when you got major through streets like Viking and Jasper and 185th. And I think there's a lot of people up there using Gypsy Valley. If you, if you took 185th, 187th, and Jasper, you've got another 570, 600,000 dollars there. And I, you know, kind of, if I was late, can hang on for three more years, you have to be, something done to it to hold it together.
It is temporary patching is what all we could do.
And part of the cost can be regained in assessment. I'm not sure 50 would be a great way to start, but I don't know if we could pull off 50. But, you know, if you can, RCA here, it says 25, maybe 35. Okay, we're trying to get some success where people haven't been facing this. You know, a number of the people have never seen anything since they moved out here. Others that have been out here a while, haven't seen anything in a while. We want to get some success and get the ball rolling here and, and build, you know, again, whether it's assessment, or bonding, or going at it slowly and trying to stay ahead of it. We're going to have to fund it somehow.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Well, we want to get going. And I don't think you want to bond and try to do all of it at once, because then, if you do all of it at once, then 10, 10, 20 years from now, you're going to be back in the same boat. You're going to have all the roads ready that need to be redone all at once again. So, I think we need to get, take it in steps, and we need to get going. 2018, and we need to, we should, you know, figure that we, we should try to plan on doing at least three miles of road every year. And until we get caught up in that. But I don't think you'll ever catch up, because like I said, when you start doing even a 50 percent assessment, I think everybody's going to want their roads done.
Well, and that's, that's why we tasked the, the road advisory group to, to give us a plan. We have a plan going forward for five years out. Obviously, it needs to continue. We have no idea when we're going to hit 5,000 people, or what the state's going to continue to do as far as state aid. Will there still be some aid to cities under 5,000? You know, last year, they were talking about doubling what we ended up getting. They were talking 120 to 130 for small cities, maximum. And it ended up being reduced to 65, 62, somewhere in there. So, there's still some possibilities for state aid to, to help with some of that. And then we have to, again, one of the things we've debated over each year with, with budget cycles, is not having a plan to put the monies towards. There's a plan that averages just over 300,000 dollars a year. So, our budget needs to show, to address this five-year plan, 300,000 dollars a year going into the road. And, and if we don't get something from state aid of any sort, we have to, probably in addition to that, consider some type of bonding for our major throughways, like Viking and 185th. But, but again, starting with this five-year plan and doing something in 2018, to the tune of 300 plus or minus. We've got 190, 188 in the fund right now.
188.
And, and the proposed budget has additional 200, including the state money.
Plus the state money.
200 plus the state money?
Yes.
So, that gets us the, and whatever reasonably we can get in assessments, gets us through the first year of the five-year plan, and, and hopefully with some monies going forward from there.
And then you completely deplete that, and got to start all over?
Well, again, if, if we've got nearly 200,000 in it now, and we're putting 200 in, plus the state money. And we're looking at, what did you say the numbers were, Councilmember Bryan? 300?
It was 300, if we were doing Pinnaker and Krypton, it was 323,000. And the, the next RCA was to go ahead and start looking at the feasibility study for that. The Road Bridge Committee did, did start with a 25 percent assessment value. We did have the discussion of, is that the right number? And is, are the property values going to go up enough? I was going to at least propose 35. And if we, it's a matter of, it's easier to go down than it is to go up. And is, is, will, can we, can we use 50 percent? And will that, will that be acceptable with residents to get through, if that's what it is?
On the past, it was 100 percent. So, 50 percent looks pretty good.
I'd pay it 100 percent twice.
Yeah.
So, if you, if you had a $323,000 road project, and you, let's, if we can either, 35 percent would be about 100, 50 would be 100 and, what, 60. So, if you, to, to take care of the projects for 2018. And then, then the question comes in, we'd have to, how, how would we cover the assessed value to pay, to pay for the project? And would we, you know, it was mentioned that Shane said some areas, you know, did do some sort of bonding to cover the, the assessed value.
That's what you do, you bond. You bond for that. You, you pick a number, you try to figure out how, 50 percent assessment, how many people are going to pay it off right away, and how many aren't. Most of them will not pay it off. It'll go through assessment. But they may, when they sell their property, it has to be paid off then. So, it may get paid off early, so. But you build, you charge interest on that money, and you add a little extra interest in it to offset them costs, to make up them differences, so. But yeah, you sell bonds, that's the way we've done in the past.
Would you sell bonds every year for that smaller amount? Because then it's probably, if you're only selling a bond for 160,000 or 170,000, you probably actually aren't going to the bond market at all. You're just going to the bank and getting that certificate of indebtedness. But I know one other community that I work for, they bond every three years. So, they, again, they kind of have a financial plan. And I don't know exactly how it works, but it, it allows them to, every three years, sell a larger bond, get better interest rates. And then, at any given time, they never have more than three bonds outstanding. I think they use it the same way, where it's, it's just kind of a revolving fund that funds the-
The interest money that maybe just sit in the bank.
Right. But it's, it's just for the, the assessed portion. And it's kind of, you know, turns into a revolving.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I think what Shane is talking about, that would be a good question for our bond, bond council, is what is the better thing for us to do? Do smaller every year, or do a larger, and, and keep that money for the next two years?
He probably says every year, because he gets a portion of it every time we bond.
He gets a portion of every time you bond, whether it's one year, or everything.
I guess he gets the percentage either way.
Yeah. But for us financially, what is the, the better way for us to do it?
I think he said that, that for certain amounts, they would not do a bond sale.
They would, but you, you're going to get a better interest rate with a bigger bond. If you get over a million dollars, you're going to get a better rate.
Well, what's council want to do? You have enough information to vote on Tuesday? Or should we process what the Road and Bridge said, and come up with a variation of what we see here?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I think first and foremost, we as a council need to figure out what assessment value we want to use, you know, regardless of 25, 35, 50. You know, that's, because again, you know, my opinion, you know, if you use 25, you're going to deplete the fund that we have slowly started to build up pretty quick. And to try to then recoup from that, it's going, going to be tough.
I, I think 25's too low. And, you know, again, not that the, there wasn't a lot of discussion on it, as Shane said. But I, I don't know that, the training is there with that group to know what difference that makes. I'm just saying, if you get 25 percent back, well, that's less than the city's paying. But you're right, it's going to deplete the, the funds. 50 percent? Sounds harsher. I mean, you know, again, I don't know if it's realistic, from the, the people that would challenge it. Is 35 percent a reasonable?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, I don't know if anybody else on this council can speak for it, but I've been assessed 100 percent twice since I've lived here, you know. And we didn't have much of a choice back then. You know, we did, it passed, it happened, we did it. I think if we go 50 percent, which is still harsh, I, I don't want to pay it. But, and one of my, my coaches on the list, so I'd be hit, my third assessment since I've been out here.
My answer.
But, um, it's, it's a, it's an amount that it's showing the city is trying to do what it can with the funds that we have. But it's also not then depleting the fund that we have down to nothing. So, then we're scrambling every year to catch up. You know, again, perfect world, and I love it to be zero, of course. But in all reality, I don't think we're ever going to get there. I think, and again, 50 percent is a heck of a lot better than getting a full assessment. Like I said, I've been there twice. So, and as I said, you know, if we try a 50 percent, you know, we're able to do a lot more, a lot sooner than if we try to go to a 35 percent.
If you look at it compared to what we're spending on our gravel roads, the 50 percent is way more than what we're spending per mile on a gravel road. So, I think the citizens ought to feel pretty good about the city picking up 50 percent of the tab for that blacktop.
Say that again, then.
Well, if you compare what we're spending per mile on gravel in our roads every year, we spend roughly 50,000 dollars on gravel, plus the peeling stuff. And we, how many miles do we do? Three miles of road a year, or better, three to five. So, that's way less, you know, so if we tell them, the city will pick up the tab for that, for your overlay, the same price, 50,000 for three miles of road, that's a lot less than what we're offering at 50 percent. So, they're, they're getting a pretty good bang for their buck.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, it, it is hard to come up with a percentage. I think 50 is, is probably a good percentage. You know, nothing in life is free. You know, when you buy a house, there are expenses along with that house. There's nothing that says, when you get a mortgage, you're only going to put one roof on, or you're only going to do your road once. Those are things that, that come along with homeownership. They're not nice to, to get hit with. I, I've been assessed many times in the city. And, and it, it hurts. But if you do want to maintain it, we need to do that. The city doesn't have the funds without raising our levy, a very large amount, to put that money in the bank, and, and just to do things at no charge to the residents, or at little charge to the residents. We don't have that ability. So, I, I think 50, I, you know, I probably get, you know, called on it, but I, I could say even 65. Let's see what happens at 65. And, and get some work, get a couple jobs under our belt, and see how that goes. And maybe you could back down to 50, once we are able to keep some money in the bank. Look at, every year with our budgeting, increasing the numbers that we're putting into the Road and Bridge program. And, and hopefully we could back down on that. But I think at a minimum, it has to be 50.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
So, if, let's just assume we went with 50. We would need 184, 17, let's just say 174, the Pinnaker and Krypton. Is there, I guess, a question for Shane would be, is there val, is there, was there, I don't, I don't remember, was there one part of Viking that was better or worse? I think north or-
Old Viking?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think the section between County Road 66 and 47 is a little bit worse shape. They have that, there's that wetland on the north side, and the road's kind of sliding into the wetland. And then there's some low area by the, the creek, and there's, there's a big patch in there from when we did the, the box culvert. But on either side of it, there's quite a bit of alligator pavement.
That one area that's cracked and sliding, that's, the road was wide in there, they stepped it.
Okay.
It's filled in the slope. So, it's just keeps sliding down the slope. That's been passed many times by the old. That was a fault of the county when they did that. They didn't want to hear, come back and do it, or redo it, or-
So, if it's still sliding, we probably need to add some fill to that slope to-
You probably need to cut it out, and dig it out, and then bench it. So, it won't slide.
So, you estimated the two-inch overlay at 5, 540, to do the whole thing?
Correct. That includes patching, and there's-
Would it be?
There's less houses on that section between 66 and 47. I think the traffic's lower, too. So, I mean, if there's a way to do that section between 5 and 66, that'd be the ideal section to take care of.
So, I was wondering if, if we look at doing Pinnaker Lake, and as well as half of Viking.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I have a question. So, I guess I missed something. I apologize. I had surgery, it's making my stomach go up. So, did I not hear Councilmember Bettinger say the 66 to 47? But then I heard 5 to 66. So, which are we talking?
Said 66 to 47 is fewer houses.
Okay.
Less traffic.
Less traffic.
But in worse shape.
But in the worst shape. That was-
Worse shape and needs need some step work on where the road's sliding into the wetlands.
Okay, because I I thought I heard him and then I heard somebody else.
And the other question was more houses?
More on the other part, yeah.
To distribute the cost to between five and sixty-six.
Ideally, it'd be nice to reclaim it and put two lifts on it. And that'd be a good road probably for another twenty-five, thirty years, but the money just isn't there.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, the Councilmember Bettinger's point, I mean, that that would be the ideal point, but that we could still do that in a couple of years. I don't see it falling apart to the point where that, you know.
But then that drives the problem, that drives the cost up and then that drives the assessment.
Yeah. Most of the reclaim and pave projects that I do run around three hundred thousand per mile. So, you know, the and this is probably figured at a hundred and eighty or or a little more. So it's it's not quite twice, but it's it's a lot better than seven or eight hundred thousand per mile, you know, it's.
But it's almost, it's three and a half miles, so it's, you're looking at it on a million bucks. Almost double.
Almost double, yeah.
Yeah. And so for me to sit here and have to answer to them, well, why didn't you do something sooner? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I.
Now, if I'm paying five thousand, I gotta pay ten thousand, could be waited two years or five years.
And I.
And maybe I won't be here.
I completely understand that point and that that does put the council in a a hard position. At the same time, it's gonna be, I feel it's just as hard for the developments if those roads go and have to be reconstructed. And I guess my opinion is if I'm gonna put more city dollars towards any of the projects, it would it would be the the Old Vikings and the Jaspers and the Hundred Hundred and Eighty-Fifth. They're just, there's there's no way to get it all done with a limited amount of money. And then we got the Rogers Lake area down there, what do you, I mean, that, of course, that one's almost beyond. That that's a, I think that road only has an inch and a half, two inches on that to begin with. And it's looking in pretty rough shape, yeah.
Right, which is why that was basically a full depth reclamation and paving, and that was why that one was spread out over two years.
Right. And truth be told, we might get to that in four or five years, you know. By the time we get to twenty twenty-two, there might be more work than that. But those type of things, you know, we can't accurately predict how long, exactly how long a road's gonna last or what it's gonna need in five years. So one of the things that we discussed at the Road and Bridge Committee meeting is that really you should have a five-year plan so you have some idea of what you're doing in the next five years. But that plan needs to be looked at each year and approved for the next five years. So right now, we're looking at twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two. This time next year, the council should be looking at twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three and keep on moving. You know, five-year increments, but each time they shift by one year.
I would like us looking doing them two developments. That Old Viking, doing Old Viking and the Pinnacle Lake.
Both in twenty eighteen?
Yeah. And you might get a lot better deal, but they're fairly close together for larger proj- projects, so. If you were to do them and to get them, get it approved, get the feasibility study and get get it out there and get it bid early before they fill up, you'll probably get a better price. And I don't know, there's some, there's a few cities now, they're they're combining their projects, so they get a better price too, or it's Coon Rapids and Anover, or a few of them combining some of their projects or some of their maintenance stuff or?
Yeah, there's that seal coat or, you know, the the Coon Rapids and I think there's five or six cities in that that are all with JPA and they do the seal coating together.
And we could talk to the counties, see if we could take on with theirs.
That's what was mentioned when they were here.
Yeah, because they, they spend like seven to nine million a year on overlays. The local guy right over here, karma gets them, so.
What do we want to do for Tuesday? Do we need to be? Is there an action we take now or do we?
Well, between Pinnacle Lake and Old Viking, the two together, or what? Just a hair over seven hundred thousand? About seven ninety-five? So half of that would be?
Six ninety-five.
About four hundred or a hair under.
Ninety-five, six ninety-five, so you'd be, you'd have fifty percent split, yeah, you'd be what?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Which we would have with
Correct.
with what we have coming in this next year and what's in the deal, so we'd be good.
Councilmember Bettinger. When you speak to Old Viking, are you speaking again that piece from?
No, the entire stretch.
The entire stretch?
By forty, if I remember.
Yep. To do a to do a two-inch overlay and patching as needed?
Six ninety-five.
And Pinnacle was one fifty-five.
Yep, six ninety-five.
So say seven hundred. Three hundred and fifty thousand city, three hundred and fifty.
What would be the plan then if we assume this, that we would go to fifty percent? And it comes back saying that's too high of a percentage based on the value to the property owner? What do we do inside then? Do we decide to pull out of one of the two, only do part of the Old Viking? What? Or do we pull the money out of the bank? I mean, what what would we do if we were told that?
That's this is what we'd have to make at that time. You could you could do extra bonding if you wanted to, or you could pull out part of it or or you could change the percentage or I don't think, you know.
Okay, well, I just, it's just something we have to think about that, because it.
That's why when you pick that percentage, it's gonna be hard to go up, you know, it's it's gonna be pretty easy standing from one and go down, but.
Yeah.
It's easier to go down than go up, right?
But we have to know that that's a possibility.
Well, and and we're not gonna know that, because obviously we haven't done this for so many years. We don't, we won't know until we pick a project and see what happens.
Right.
And then obviously by that project, it's gonna educate us all exactly where we're at and what is feasible and what's not.
And some people may be opposed to it before it starts and when it's all done, a year or two later, they'll say it's the best thing that ever happened.
We've already gotten a letter on Old Viking.
Yeah.
No. All right, so for Tuesday, what do we want to propose? Start with Pinnacle, Old Viking, fifty percent?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was going to change your.
Change to that, yes. The second one.
All right, anybody got any further discussion on it? That was easy.
One of ours, I expected.
Mr. Mayor.
It's a tough decision, so.
Along with that, then, would we want to vote on getting Shane started on feasibility study and all that? That's what the next one was.
So, being there's two of them, we get a discount, right?
So I'm guessing that, um, Mr. Bryan is going to redo both of the RCAs to reflect the changes that were discussed tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we can move along.
I would just redo the one and send the other one back to Road and Bridge to redo it, the five-year plan? What's your think, or?
It'd be, well, it'd be, it'd be literally, where are you going with Garnet in two hundred and eighteen, then, is it?
Well, being we picked the fifty percent assessment policy and stuff, then they can rework the dollars to see what will fit in for each year.
Yeah, right, right now.
We made this decision what we were doing in two thousand and eighteen.
Yep.
And then here's how many dollars we're gonna have to spend each year, and then they can work it work it on down.
Have a lot more to work with now.
Yeah, all right.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to, then we just pull, the first one to do the second one.
Pardon?
So then we're just, in essence, pulling the five-year plan out.
Coming up with the proposal for twenty eighteen.
Using, and we have a proposal for twenty eighteen.
Sending the five-year back to Road Advisory Group and. All right. All right, anything else for Shane?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. He's also here, if you had any questions on the engineering manual.
Oh, yes. Do you read that all the time?
Do I read it all the time?
Do you need to get to sleep or?
Uh, the engineering manual is more to give to developers in the city so they understand the criteria. We want our future roads to last as long as possible. And that starts out by having a a good specification. So really, the the updates that you see tonight are updates to bring our standards in a compliance or in line with the current MnDOT standards. MnDOT revised their specs a handful of times since our original manual.
Anybody have any questions on that resolution?
I got, do we want to do this tonight, or I got a few comments? So I did read all of it. And one of them's on page two. Says that the developers shall provide an SQ for fog sealing the streets in the event that the final wear course is placed prior to seventy-five seventy-five percent build-out.
Okay.
Is that really necessary? It really doesn't, I don't see why that's, I guess it don't hurt, but it really doesn't help anything.
No, the fog seal just helps with the appearance of the road, so I guess it it's, we go back and forth on whether it's better to place the wear course one year after the initial road is constructed and get that full strength right away before you have all the construction traffic on it. But then u- usually you have, you know, people dropping their lumber loads and forklifts and, you know, they kind of. So that's just to make the road appear new after the constructions.
But some of our roads may be ten years before seventy-five percent build-out.
Sure.
So we've never done it in the past, I just, I noticed that in and out, I don't know if that's, I guess it don't hurt, but I don't know if it's really, it doesn't really do a real lot. On page three, the developers and engineers should provide the city with a complete set of full-size electronic ASBIL plans in Adobe PDF or AutoCAD. Are we receiving all of them or is is Hockes and Anderson been receiving them in the past for all developments? And if so, can the city get a copy of them? Because like the water sit plan and stuff they want, adverts for all the culverts and stuff within the city and all them, that's something that's gonna be coming down?
Sure.
So it'd be kind of nice if, I suppose for us, we we don't have AutoCAD, but if we had a PDF, they could open it up and take that information from the from the ground.
Yeah, we have good ASBILs, I would say, from all the late nineties and on, you know, the automakers, the Bailey Estates, Country Metals. Before that, not so much.
Okay, and whatever we got, it'd be nice to have, I think on, Rickert, you're on file here someplace.
We do have some development plans on disc already. But I don't know that they're the road construction ones or not.
Yeah.
But we do have.
DASBILs are the after, after it's done, there's supposed, if any changes, then they're supposed to, you know, if inverse change or whatever, and that information is supposed to be recorded.
Right.
It'd be nice to have that information available. And on page seventeen, uh, flanks, signs shall be galvanized, flanks shall sign posts, which I don't think is on any of our roads. I think we used the black. State typically use galvanized and, um, county uses black four-pound posts.
Okay. So painted black?
I guess it makes a difference, so it's what what do we prefer? I mean, a lot of people, like the county, they don't like to use galvanized, because then it if you see a galvanized post, you know it's MnDOT sign. If you see a black post, you know it's an old county sign. It helps distinguish that somewhat, but.
Sure.
Other than that, it makes no difference, I mean. But right now, our all our signs out there, I know they're all on black posts. So do we want to change them at? And then if we do, then maybe we need to let Joe know that we're going with galvanized now, so it's consistent.
Right.
So that's a decision on how the rest of you feel, it makes no difference to me, but.
A cost difference?
I don't think so, there's
If there is, it's minimal, I mean.
Galvanized probably doesn't rust as bad, I would have.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I I kind of prefer the the galvanized square tubing, but I know we don't have any of that, but.
No, no. I don't know, maybe talk to Joe and then if he, see what he wants and if it's if it's the black or whatever he wants, I guess I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Page thirty-four. The city engineers shall be notified twenty-four hours prior to any proposed partial blockage or closure of any street. Shouldn't that notice be a lot more than twenty-four hours? Notice be given to city, local, police, fire after closing a road unless it's an emergency, but for road construction?
Yeah, I mean, I I I kind of read this as as their street while they're working on, you know, within a development. But yeah, definitely if there was a, you know, an existing city street.
Yes, I would want to make sure if it's existing city street that they're closing, then there should be at least a seven to ten day notice. So I don't know if you want to change the wording on that or just keep that in mind. And then the standard plates. And I think I've mentioned this before, and I don't know what, how the rest of you feel about, you know, the cost of roads are are pretty expensive. Do we want to change a different road sec- to be have a different road section based on classification? You know, if you got a dead end road that's just a cul-de-sac that serves four or five houses, does it need to be twenty-four feet wide? Should we narrow them out up to be twenty-two feet wide? And that would really help save some money on future maintenance and the initial cost. I don't think we was the minimum, is it about ten-foot lanes? I wouldn't want to go down to twenty, but the twenty.
Yeah, the minimum for two-way traffic is actually an eighteen-foot road.
Which is really narrow.
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have to pull over, meet somebody on the road.
See, that's what they have in Ireland, I think.
Yeah.
But I think on on some of the dead-end roads, we could go down to a twenty-two-foot section.
Yeah, we could, I mean, especially if they were gonna be permanent dead ends.
Yeah.
I've built twenty-two-foot roads and they're.
A lot of ours here are, I mean, uh,
Right.
Old Viking, Jasper, Hundred, all of them are twenty-two-foot roads, because just to help keep the cost down for assessments. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that or something want to look at or had a major through roads to collectors or if they're gonna be future through roads, then yeah, you, I'd say keep them if you're twenty-four, but your your short dead-end roads, make them twenty-two feet.
So are you, you're, so are you talking about going in and changing them all out or as we do something new?
No ones.
No.
Just new, okay.
And you could do that if you have a road that's gonna need to total reconstruct.
Something.
You could go down to twenty-two feet if it was twenty-four.
So the designation, you know, and. So the designation, you know, and the developers coming in, I mean, obviously we'd have to have a plan that says, you're dead-ending this, and I think of Bailey Estates, where we dead-ended, knowing that at some point they're gonna connect in to the Elk River Development when east, western, eastern Elk River develops. So they're dead-end now, but it's, it's gonna be a through road eventually.
Then you would go with a 24. So if it's planned to be a through road someday, then you go 24.
No, we just have to make sure that's clearly indicated.
Permanent cul-de-sac would be the, I mean, at that point, I don't know if it, if it, a permanent cul-de-sac that's 1,000 feet long probably doesn't serve that many homes, that many more homes than a permanent cul-de-sac that's 500 feet long, you know, it's...
Right. Yeah, any permanent cul-de-sac, really, yeah.
Right.
And that'd be the same thing with your 102 standard plate section then, with the dead-end street. With the covering better, you got 13 feet to the, to the back. Maybe we could do the same thing, narrow it up. And then this, one more, standard plate number 107. They're a rural driveway section. Show like aprons, like almost, they look like a concrete apron, which, they're never built that way. They're typically built with a radius.
Oh, the, yeah, it's more of a curved...
Yeah, you're almost showing like a curved section, apron going up. Maybe we should change that with an allowable radius.
Sure.
That's all I have. Sorry I read it.
No, we appreciate, you know, that, you know, and again, with your, your background with the highway department, and you certainly understand that portion of it there, we appreciate you bringing that forward. Anything else for Shane?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Reindel.
They don't have anything for Shane, but it reminds me of, Corey, have we received copies yet of Shane's report? I thought I remember hearing something, we were gonna get it after he presented to Roden Bridge.
Of which report?
The last one that he did for us, the last study.
Yeah, you should have already, that was already part of, you got it when you got the Road and Bridge guy.
Yeah, okay, all right, I will look that, I missed it.
Yeah, 'cause it was when we gave it to Road and Bridge, you guys all got it.
Okay, all right, then I just messed up. All right, thank you.
If you can't find it, just let me know and I'll resend it to you.
All right, thank you.
Emails. That was part of the, that was, the Road and Bridge was this email that went out a bunch of times.
That was the 20th. Yeah, or the 30th meeting.
I missed it. All right, now anything else for Shane? Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
All right, 9:15, how we doing here? Let's see, I gotta figure Cory predicted 9:10, I just missed it. All right, Ms. Stockman.
Where are we at? Let's see.
B?
Code enforcement process. So we got a draft letter. And the regular updates. So for the draft letter, if we want to make it more friendly and send it out before we send out the actual notice, um, I would still recommend that we reference the section, numbers of the violation or suspected violation. Uh, so really, the only thing we're not, that's not in there to make it different than the notice is the fee part of it.
Potential fines.
Right, the potential fines, right. So it's not a lot different, I guess it's just a little more wordy and, uh, tried to make it more friendly, so I'll see what, you know, if you think it needs to be changed, I'm open to that. And then the question is, well, then we have to kind of look at our process, uh, based on our, what's in the ordinance will then have to be changed, because the notice won't be going out first. We'll have to kind of set a timeframe too, if you want to send this out, for instance, and then wait 14 or 15 days and then send a notice, or how? I know you had some, um, recommended or proposed changes too, but, uh, anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Reindel.
Ms. Stockman, and I did, I did have a draft copy for discussion as far as changes in our policy. What I, I like this letter, um, but what I would like to be able to see is that, um, and I address it in my, my draft, is that, um, our deputy clerk is the one that is tasked with sending this out. So she would, the complaint would come in, um, she would look at our, our ordinances, what the potential conflicts are, um, and then send this out, and then have the conversation with the resident when they come back, uh, to her.
Let me, because it is 20 after 9:00, we've got a bunch of stuff we haven't talked about yet. Yeah, I had notations on here. I still think, I'd rather see words like, rather than complaint, possible notification of city code or zoning issues. There's things I would like to suggest and, and taking into account Mary's RCA on the process. I think with, with your draft of a letter and Mary's draft of a process, I would like to recommend as, as a council, we look at it and bring it up next month, rather than try and iron it all out tonight. Is that gonna impede anything that you're doing if we wait a month on this?
No, I guess I'd like to comment on it, some of it, but if you want to wait, uh, that's fine, I guess.
'Cause you had said you had some additional things that you want to talk about as well.
Oh, I just have an update for the Bearman Wildlife Management Area and then...
So, so would, would people take a look at this and, and, and make your, your proposed changes and get them to Cory and, and see what we can do for next one? Between this and the RCA that Mary has on the process? Does that make sense?
Sure.
All right. All right, then, you want to talk about the Bearman and if there's any code enforcement?
Yeah, unless you had any comments, the code enforcement was just a minor updates.
All right, Bearman, what, what did, how did that go?
So, yeah, I was the only one there. And, uh, even on that night, they still didn't have their appraisal. So I basically said that we would really like the land, um, and I brought some wetland maps, and I said, you can't possibly have a complete appraisal without knowing if this is a buildable site, because I really doubt that it is. 'Cause I had talked to Becky Wozni at, um, Oakland County Soil and Water, and so she had provided me maps, and, um, so I went on record to say that, and then, um, that we would like to maintain it in perpetuity and keep it open to the public. So their process is, it'll be going to auction on December 18th. I just today got a call that the appraisal, well, the taxable value is 158.7. The appraised value is 115,000, and then the county added on $7,600 to make it 122.6, which is the minimum starting bid for the auction. So then if it doesn't sell, then they offer it up at 75% of that, and the, all the surrounding neighbors get noticed that it's available. And then this one guy there was very helpful, and he said, you know, there's still a chance you could get it. And I said, how so? If it doesn't sell after all that, then you, you go, it has to go through the legislature to basically get sort of like a variance for them to sell it cheaper than the appraised value, because that's the statute says, so anyway. But there's a, there's a county, St. Louis County, right now is going through this process where they're getting a piece of land back. And I don't know if it's for a very nominal amount, or if it's just being handed back or what the deal is, but at any rate, we won't really know much until, you know, January-ish, so...
All right, and that'll keep you notified?
Yep, they're gonna keep me notified.
All right, thank you for doing that.
And the only other thing I had, uh, was regarding park dedication. You know, our ordinance reads that we charge park dedication fees for all new lots. New lots are described as the total lots. So, um, we've run into this before, and we typically have just been charging for the lot that was created, not the lot with the house on it. I mean, technically, you have two new lots because you have two new PID numbers when somebody splits. But I'm asking that we maybe send that topic back to P and Z to just discuss whether they want to change it, um, because now we're presented with the Eng plat. He's got really three new lots, one of which contains his existing house, because he had to separate the house from that outlot. That was the remainder of the, you know, the back area. But nonetheless, the house was there first, so we were proposing that we charge them two for the two new lots. But what, I don't know, um, that's been our, you know, the way that we've handled it in recent years, so... And I know it's come up before, at least at planning and zoning.
Counsel?
So Eng had a building right, you know, he, when he owned the total of the 80 acres or even just on a 40, he had the right to build one house.
And did Eng, when he built that, did he pay any parking trail fee?
No, 'cause he didn't split at that time. Yeah, he didn't split at that time, so now he's split. There's two new lots, of course, with two new houses, so and that makes a lot of sense, you know, per house, you're adding people, so you're, you know, you're adding basically burden on your parking trail system or whatever. But the way the ordinance reads, it would be the total number of lots, which would be three, so whether or not, and, you know, then that would apply to a two-lot split or whatever too. You don't, you don't necessarily want to charge a fee for the existing lot with the house on it.
Does that need to go back to P and Z, or is that something that...
Yeah, that would be a change to the subdivision ordinance.
And we should, we should have them consider it, because it, it does seem to be pretty aggressive, but we should have the discussion of the pros and cons, and if they want to change it, then we have to change the ordinance.
That's what I, yeah, was requesting, was permission to put it on the P and Z agenda, I guess, and...
Counsel, okay with that?
Well, it should be changed to meet the intent, and the intent was never to charge for the existing lot.
Yep.
Right.
So, so in that, I would like it to go to P and Z with the understanding to change to the intent, not to have them get more aggressive.
Yeah, right.
And, Mr. Mayor, just, I just wanted to reference that our past practice has always been, since I've worked here, that any newly created lot, it has never been that we've charged that existing lot, just anything.
I was gonna say, I think we'd be hearing about it if that was, so...
Yeah, right, right.
So we're trying to clear it up with, with existing practices and intent.
Right.
Make the ordinance's rewrite.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bryan.
With the Engs, isn't there technically four lots? The original house, the two new houses, and the new outlot?
No, the outlot's not a buildable lot. That would never be charged a park for.
Okay, all right.
'Cause it's not buildable.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Ms. Stockman, anything else?
That is it.
Anything else on the rest of our agenda here that she needs to be part of?
I guess...
We talked about the open house.
Scheduling, yeah. I guess not.
Talked about the administrative citation. All right. And the consent agenda. Anybody have any problem with the non-conservation tax forfeit property over here on the lake? Put the city flag in the middle of Bass Lake. Back over to license renewal, sheriff's contract. Purchase of land you sign, uh, my understanding from that, we'd be looking at the county?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, Councilmember Bettinger was, you know, able to get a quote from the county, which was less than the other two, um, for basically the same thing. The, their quote is attached along with the other quotes that I had, so I would say, so I'm just recommending that we go ahead and get, get four signs through the county.
And sandbags?
And, and bags.
All right. Al Vile wants to be in the watershed.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, wear that guy out.
I, I appreciate Al's willingness to serve, but that would be three committees, and I really think that we should continue to advertise for that position and see if we find another resident that's interested. Again, I appreciate his willingness, but we should spread the glory a little bit.
Anyone else?
The watershed typically, once the plan is done here, they, they go, or at least they used to go to quarterly meetings, so there's not that many meetings once it's, the plan is done here, so I don't think it's, would be that taxing on them.
Were you still looking to get off if you could? You had mentioned it one time.
I should stick it out until the, the plan is done, for sure.
Rest of the council. He can spit it out.
Mr. Mayor, um, you know, I, I'd say if, if, if Al is interested, then, and, and, and knows what's going on, or wants to get involved, then more power to him. I'm not aware of anyone else who is, who has shown interest. If there is someone at the time that is available, then, you know, we can look at...
They can have my position.
Seeing, seeing if, if Councilmember Bettinger still wants to be involved, or, you know, we change, or we look at where things are at for next year.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think when we, when we had the opening, it took...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think when we, when we had the opening, it took a while to get Malcolm even interested in Richard Walstrom. I keep on bugging him. He's not interested in going back. So, those are the only two in the last, I don't know how many years that have ever shown any interest in that.
Melanie Kern was, but I don't think she goes out at night.
I don't think she gets out as much either, so...
She was interested.
Randy had talked about that.
I tried to get her to go on it years ago and she wasn't interested in back then.
I talked to her at Heritage Festival last year. She just doesn't have, she doesn't go out much at night and doesn't have a reliable driver to... Yeah, I said when it's the quarterly meetings, it wasn't so bad, but... I mean, there's a person with a passion for it, but...
Yeah, well...
I thought the lady up at Milestone Ponds that was so concerned about the water. Well, we'll have to let Al tell us when he's having up. Speak loud and clearly.
He'll do fine.
And I, and I don't doubt he will, I just...
We have the RCA acknowledgement generosity, brain bewildering. I had a comment on there. I, I would like to include in that also the extra effort they went to relocating the warming house, even though they told us we had one moved that was...
It was on there.
It is included.
Okay, there it is. Maybe then resetting, maybe relocating because they reset it the first time, maybe that's why I went past it there. I was thinking they said it the first time, relocating because Bill indicated that was a bigger deal than, we kind of thought it was thrown in with, when they put it down the first time, we had a free move. He did indicate that was a big deal.
I will revise that then.
And then on, on the, the audited bills, I had a question on claim four fifty-one, that seventy-seven hundred dollars worth of signs.
What was the...
Four fifty-one?
Yeah, that's not my top four, maybe it's the actual... We have several, some stop, head signs, some bigger list. This is a bunch of signs that...
All right, so right left, main plates.
Curves, must be curve signs.
Yep.
I told Michael, we need to start going through the, our roads and like, I know Viking, they haven't been replaced for, since ninety-one and they're really faded. They need to start replacing them and I said, "When you do a road, do the whole thing."
Line intersection signs, ninety bucks.
Documenting what roads you're doing and gradually go through the whole city, replace them all.
Double arrows, forty bucks.
With the technology and the paper and film now that they got, it's night and day difference, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thirty inch stop signs are eighty-nine bucks, or stop ahead symbols. All right. Okay, and then mailbox post, I think we've, to about seven, we budgeted seven hundred fifty dollars for that and we put, we just bought twenty-one hundred dollars worth of mailbox posts. And that is claim four sixty-two.
And we usually buy some by the pallets. That was, that was fifty of them. I'm ready on about purchasing.
Where does he get them, from Smith?
From J and D or J and D Manufacturing or located in Wilmer.
Okay. I think DeColi gets them from a place in San Francisco, is it Smith Iron or, I'm not sure.
No, I think he checked into that one time because we had that discussion before and I think he may have checked on them before, but, and then just keep in mind that we sell them to the public to, and then if they install them, then there's an extra twenty-five we get. And then also we're heating them in the winter when they need to replace them, so...
Just don't tell the guys they can hit a lot of them just because they're sitting in the...
No, no. And it's, it's probably been a while since he's ordered them again, so he usually does a pallet full and then we're good for quite a while.
All right.
County drivers have a bad night, they'd probably do that many of them one blow.
Because actually, I mean, we only budgeted fifty-five hundred and we're now at ninety-nine, ninety-five for signs and mailboxes.
Kim's cleaning, how's it going?
Good, they pop in and they're very respectful. If they, if they hear us on a phone or something, they'll, they won't come into and vacuum around us or anything and they've been very good.
They're good work?
Yeah, they're in and out pretty fast. There's two of them that's been coming and one usually does the vacuuming and manages all that and then the other one's cleaning the restrooms and then once that's done, then they're both in the kitchen taking care of that, so...
The two hundred and ninety-six, is that a month?
It was for a month, yeah.
So, that's twice.
And...
And when we were getting before, it was one forty-nine every two weeks.
Yeah. And I, I don't, I haven't heard anything from them as far as how it's been going in here. As long as the tables and chairs and stuff are put away, I think there was one time that they did come and we had a meeting or something and we didn't, or we set up for the meeting, that was that October thirtieth meeting.
Oh, okay.
And I told them to just do the best they can around all the chairs and tables and stuff, so...
And one other was the, I thought we asked Joe earlier in the year if he was done crack sealing for the year and we just got another twenty-two, seven.
Yeah, apparently he did.
Did he go back and decide to crack seal more?
I, that's what I understood, yes. I haven't seen Joe for this week, so just...
Could you just, was he in before Tuesday?
I'm trying to think which days he took off this week. He's been in and out, but it's been just very briefly that I've seen him and this wasn't one of the things that I've helped him with. Usually when he gives us the invoices or when we get them, if there's questions on things, we'll, you know, write notes to him.
I just wondered what, because at one meeting this summer, he said he was done and I just was surprised that we're going back to crack sealing late in the year, so...
Yeah, and I think that, I don't know what his purpose was to have it done twice, but I know that they generally like to do it. I think it's after a certain time and I don't know if he got so much done beforehand before it got really, really hot and I don't know, I'm not really sure. That may be something you have to ask him direct.
All right.
Was that the last?
Yep. Recreational skating area. We touched base on it when Paul and I were out there looking at the warming house and right now Central Park at Ramsey has approximately a ninety-foot oval or circle. And our, our hockey rink is eighty by two hundred, so we were saying approximately half the size of the hockey rink for recreational. My personal preference would be to move it to the east, diagram two. Just keeps it further away from playing box, in my opinion, and still gives an access to get through there if we need to in the winter without having to go across the ice for Joe. And it was, it was proposed to be a hundred foot square, maybe, is that what you said?
Yeah. Has the warming house been set already or?
Yes.
Okay. How can we face the door to the north?
So, Joe had said it last year and I think that was for, for getting to the, the ice surface.
Because the wind's typically out of the northwest, so normally you face the doors south and the wind will blow and blow your heat out and...
I had originally talked to Joe last year about doing that just so the sun could come in because that was the biggest glass surface on it, but we actually didn't discuss it then because that's what it was last year, so...
If it's set, it's set.
Yeah, if you want to go talk to Bill, I'm not going to.
Say Jeff wants to know.
Oh, I meant to turn it around this way. I, I had actually thought it's not, it wouldn't be as convenient to get onto the ice, but it did face the door towards the parking lot and out of the northwest winds and gets the sun in, but...
But with the layout, too, you could have turned it around and you just pushed it north a little bit, it'd be the same distance to the ice. It would, you know, it's fine, it'll work.
I think, you know...
It's nice, that, that wind when it comes out northwest sometimes, it's nasty, but they're outside anyway.
Paul, were you going to say something else?
Yeah, just, you know, in talking to Cory, I, I kind of thought we had talked about it at our last meeting, but we had never officially made a motion to, on where we were going to place it and how big, so that's why I wanted to...
Yeah, I think it was part of our task was to look that over when we were over looking at the warming house.
And then I, I did go over and I was talking to Joe to figure out what the best layout, obviously for, you know, getting in and out of the warming house with skates and without skates and obviously what would be the best and he, he liked the option, too, where again, if he need, needs it, he can get a truck in between the warming house.
That's, that's what I was thinking, that...
And that's what Joe preferred, too, so then we would have, he would have to level a little spot over there, you know?
Anybody got any other concerns there? I will, on, on item C, you know, my RCA didn't communicate it clearly enough, so Cory presented what other cities are, are doing for renting out there, warming house and facilities if they do. My actual intention was to identify what their warming house policies were, when are they open, who's, who's managing them, what are they paying people, you know, those types of things. We got some of that in Cory's document, but I would like to know what are the normal times, when are they lit, what kind of training do they do? I mean, if, if you've got, I remember back when I was a skater, being with my sister out there and the old days, they played something called Crack the Whip and she caught one in the jaw, got skated in the jaw and there was blood all over the ice and I was really glad that the attendant at the, the rink knew what to do, but, you know, if we are having attendants there, what are other cities doing as far as training and paying and things like that? And that's really what I was, you know, the rental is a secondary part of that because we do want to know how, if we're renting it out like we do other park facilities. So, I, I would like to get that information if we could because I think it's important if we're going to staff it to know what we're competing with and what we're, what liabilities we have, so... Any other comments on that?
I'm assuming that it's going to get tabled then.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Employee reviews. You had done yours and Joe's done his for staff. I'm assuming this is on here to say, "When are you doing yours and Joe's?" It is November. When you did Laurie's and Eric's, did you use the phones?
Yeah, we got a copy.
Oh, did you?
It's not in the package, you received it earlier date.
It's in your box. Oh.
Maybe that was the habit that you were missing.
Could be.
I don't know, somebody stole your stuff or what?
Yeah, because I think I would have amended that, too, so, all right. How do we handle that?
I think all of our employees have done a fine job and I think we should move forward and honor them with a raise. They've only gotten three percent in the last ten years, I think they deserve more than that. And if we want to retain the newer ones like Laurie and stuff, if we don't step up the plate, start to cover employees, they're going to start to leave.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Rick?
Yeah, you know, I know with, with Laurie especially, you know, in the process of going through, you know, all the candidates that, that we did interview and whatnot, we did end up getting her considerably at, at lower cost than what, you know, others were wanting. So, I, I think the expectation, obviously, was there that there'll be increase once she got familiar and started doing a lot more, which I believe she's done.